Good evening, everyone. Good to see this crowd here. We've got some young men and ladies that we're recognizing tonight, which always makes for a good meeting. We thank you all for being here to our regular monthly meeting for the month of July. This time I'd like to ask everyone to please stand for our invocation of Mr. Ted Calhoun, Minister of the Living Towns Church, Pastor.
And you didn't tell me there's gonna be such a crowd tonight. When I saw the crowd, I felt like all the preachers did pray.
I figured this is a chance for you. Enough invocation.
Is that all?
Yes, sir. Whatever the Lord moves you to do.
Oh, well, that could be bad. Let us pray. Lord, as your Spirit fills this room on this evening, let us feel your presence among us, for the lives of all of ours, no matter what generation we may be in. Let us feel your presence. Be with the council members as they lead us on this evening. Be with those who they recognize on this day, those who have brought special recognition to themselves, to this town, to this high school. Be with each one of us as we hear and know of your special calling upon our lives. We invoke your name upon this meeting, on this night in Christ's name. Amen.
Prepare for a pledge of allegiance. Pledge of allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, and infinite, and eternal.
Thank you very much. Tell them the agenda. We're now, it's now time to edit the agenda for any business that's not on the agenda. Does any council member have anything to add this time? Hearing, is there a motion to approve the agendas presented? Second. Motion in second. Did you get that, Mrs. Dean? I'll favor the motion, say aye. I'll put the same side. Next is to edit approved minutes from our regular meeting in June, which if I'm not mistaken was the only meeting. That's a first. A long time in every day. Everyone had a chance to review the minutes from our June meeting. Is there a motion to approve minutes for June 12th's regular council meeting?
So move, Mayor.
Sir, second. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye. Opposed, same side. Mr. Short, we've received the council panel. Do you have any additions that I haven't?
Yes, sir.
So we're calling it today. All right, no additions. Mr. Young.
Mayor don't have any additions either, so I'll move to approve the June council panel's presentation.
Sir, second.
I'll second that, Mayor.
Further discussion?
Drew, on page one of the general fund check register, he has on his signs the LLC from the church. It does, and actually the five, one of the seven five thousand has been voided. Yeah, it's got all those invoices together, but one check. So the bottom number, he said, he kind of signs, it's about four. Those are the ones I actually look through there, and they put a plate next to it. Thanks, sir.
All those in favor, the motion, say aye. Opposed, same side. We're good fortunate here in our community. We have another state championship baseball team that we're up to second in three years. And we have students from our Career Technology Center who have achieved a lot of success at the state and the national level that we'll be recognizing tonight. So we'll start with, I'll come around, we'll start with the baseball team. And Dutch, can you come forward? Dutch, please. Mr. Penner. Mr. Stanford. I'm gonna read this resolution that I'd like the council to approve, and this is the resolution for each member of the ball team. So I'm gonna read it one time, and then after that, I'll call you up, each individual. Okay? So expressing the consensus of the mayor and the Leaven Town Council regarding the accomplishments of Terrence, the 2023 Lebanon High School State Championship Baseball Team. Whereas the 2023 Lebanon High School Baseball Team won the 2023 Hogehity District Championship. Whereas the 2023 Lebanon High School Baseball Team won the 2023 Region League Championship. And whereas the 2023 Lebanon High School Baseball Team won Junior High School League Baseball Group One A State Championship. Therefore be it resolved by the mayor and the members of the Leaven Town Council that the 2023 Lebanon High School Baseball Team be hereby commended for becoming state champions and commended for the commitment, their dedication, and success. Be it further resolved that a copy of this resolution in recognition of Lebanon High School State Championship Baseball Team be made a permanent part of the town of Lebanon Minutes on July 10th, 2023. Do I have a motion to approve this resolution?
I'll second.
The almightest.
Hey, ladies.
And Leonard, second. So, Zach. Terrence, come forward, please. You gonna play the ball personally? Okay. Seth, Ken, I believe we said tonight. These state livers playing tonight, somewhere Elizabeth, I believe, for us, though. Eli Breeden. Can you go down, line through there? Chance Parker. Chance, last time I saw you, Lebanon, you was a little man. A real little man. Congratulations. Luke Eric. Luke Taylor. Let's see. Come down a little bit. Repriment, really. Dagan Barton. Y'all up for hard on the end.
You gonna wave at the president?
Just take your time. Preston Ringbo. This was age me. Jacob Crabtree. Congratulations, my man. Congratulations. Pretty cool, pitch a no hitter and state championship.
Pretty cool.
I don't think that's where it's happening.
Be cool with doing what you want, credit card, next year.
How precious is that image? Do more years. Nick Moutcher. What'd he say to our man? Congratulations. Good to see you. Cody Compton, our head coach. Anybody else in baseball? Statiticians, Wade Compton. How you been, bud? I don't know how I saw him. I already talked to him. Of course, my man Paul Hiss. Long we go along, lady. Congratulations. Thanks for what you do. Please join me in, let's congratulate this ball team again. We'll let the parents take pictures, and everybody kind of, I need the council to get behind them like we do, get approved. Come on, right here. Where you at, Glenn?
I'm here.
You guys stay here.
Phillips, win.
Could you possibly have someone he in front?
Or me and Phil? Coach? Light it up. Over the lane. Center up the council, show. Hands, please.
I got counsel good. Well, kick me out, hold on. Technology's the work of the devil.
Hands finished.
How's things going, Mr. Bobby Phillips? How things going?
Yeah.
Good, good, good. Can we hear it?
Especially when you tend to lie. Left center and right center.
This is Nicky, right?
I love him. He's calling me this. I don't stay much, Paul. I can't even watch him. I'm sure he's moving. I'm trying to stay much.
Give me a burger.
Right, how you doing? Very good, now, gee. I'm partying. You getting dashed, right? Can't do anything with it.
They say.
See, this time I need Mr. Rastnik and instructors from the Career Technology Center to come forward.
Hang out here with me.
Mr. Brooks couldn't make it.
Okay. We have some students who have achieved locally, state, and nationally at the Career Technology Center, and are different, have been involved in different divisions and different competitions. So therefore, I'm gonna read them individually, because they're different. Ken, I have a question. Do we, can we make a motion to approve all these resolutions from the Career Technology Center in one motion?
You can, yeah.
Okay. Expressing the consensus of the mayor and the town council regarding the accomplishments of Colton Barton, first place 2023 State Skills USA Welding Sculpture Division, and second place 2023 National Skills USA Welding Sculpture Division. Whereas Colton was successful in finishing first place in the 2023 State Skills USA Welding Sculpture Division, and second place in the 2023 National Skills USA Welding Sculpture Division. Now therefore be it resolved by the mayor and the town council that Colton Barton be hereby commended and placing first at the State Skills USA, and second at the 2023 National Skills USA. Be it further resolved that a copy of this resolution in recognition of Colton Barton be made a permanent part of the town Lebanon Minutes on the 10th day of July 2023. Colton Barton. That's tough duty, that day.
Congratulations.
Keep staying up here with us, Colton, over here to the right, please. Expressing the consensus of the mayor and town council, Booker Steffey, first place 2023 State Skills USA Masonry Division, sixth place 2023 National Skills USA Masonry Division. Whereas Booker Steffey was successful in finishing first in the 2023 State Skills USA Masonry Division, and sixth place in the 2023 National Skills USA Masonry Division. Therefore be it resolved by the mayor and the town council that Booker be hereby commended and placing first in the state competition, and sixth at the national 2023 skills competition. Be it further resolved that this resolution will be a part of the minutes of the Leaven Town Council, July 10th, 2023. Booker. Your prayer. Go ahead, if you finish your prayers. Are you gonna talk, are you gonna say something about Iowa? And learning this dress?
No, just these two guys.
Go ahead.
I just wanted everybody to know.
You don't say anything about me.
Listen, these guys, these two guys right here, were all our competitors from vocational school, skills competitor. They compete against thousands of kids. There's nobody in the stands cheering them on, Friday nights, Tuesday nights, no big glitter shows at the high school, no parades. But let me tell you, these are hot shots. These are the best of the best. They go out, they, it's just as nerve wracking, it's just as intense. They go at state, they show what they can do, they show what they can learn, they practice and practice and practice. At nationals, it's the biggest thing we've ever seen. Am I right? They was, down this year was at the Georgia Congress Center, he fit, landed in at a couple times, probably. There's industry is there, offering them jobs on the spot, trying to give them fill out interest cards. Well, they know, if they're at nationals, it's the cream of the crop. So these guys, I just like to toot their horn. They don't, and I believe, I've been trying to give them, but listen, these are special guys right here, I just like to acknowledge.
Thank you very much. Hunter Cox, first place 2023 State Skills USA Brick Layer Division. Whereas Hunter Cox was successful in finishing first place in the 2023 State Skills USA Brick Layer Division. Therefore be it resolved by the mayor and the town council that Hunter be hereby commended and placing first at the State Skills USA Brick Layer Division. Be hereby commended for his commitment, his dedication, and success. Be it further resolved that a copy of this resolution will be part of the Leaven Town Council, July 10th, 23 minutes. Hunter Cox. You see, you see he gets it?
Yes.
Terrence here?
Terrence, yeah, Terrence, yeah.
He's here, okay. Terrence Jones, third place 2023 State Skills USA Masonry Division. Whereas Terrence Jones was successful in finishing third in the 2023 State Skills USA Masonry Division. Now therefore be it resolved by the mayor and the town council that Terrence be hereby commended and placing third at the State Skills USA Masonry Division, and be hereby commended for his commitment, dedication, and success. And a copy of this will be part of the Leaven Town Council, July 10th, 2023 Minutes. Terrence? Recognition of Mr. David Gilmer, Russell County Career Technology Center welding instructor. Whereas David Gilmer welding instructor for Colton Barton, who finished first in the State Skills USA Welding Sculpture Division, and second in the 2023 National Welding Sculpture Division Competition. Be it hereby resolved by the mayor and the town council that David Gilmer be hereby commended in being their instructor for Russell County Career Technology Center, and be hereby commended for his commitment, his dedication, and success. Congratulations, David.
Thank you.
Same resolution for Shannon. Can you see that he gets it? Help me get it right.
Mr. David, if it's okay, I'd like to take this moment.
I'm gonna turn it over to you, see if it's getting in line. What do you mean, guys? You staying in right here? All right.
I want to especially thank you and the council and the members for having us here tonight. It's a great thing to have support in our community, and our community has really gave us a support. Vocational school, not only in, you know, funds, but encouragement, and, you know, the whole county has gotten involved in this, what these gentlemen here have achieved. And, you know, Colton there, he's, this is his fourth year, of course, he's a senior. Not only has he worked hard in the welding program, but he's also helped every summer, in the last two or three summers, with our young kids in the summer school program, and he shares those talents that he has with those. And the ones that we, the special needs kids are the ones that we have there in the summertime, and he, he's so good to be able to do those things and share that with them. This young gentleman here is only ninth grader, and it's very, very hard to compete at this young age in the competitions that he does, and I'm very proud of him as well. And you know, I've, I've been in the teacher business, and I've been a principal, director of transportation, been in this county for many years. I look back here, see some of these people standing right back here, and I taught them in school. I look back here and I say, these parents of these children on this baseball team, and it's disgratifying that the Lord's blessed me in the years that I've had to be able to work with these kids and see the hard work and dedication that they put forth to succeed, and, you know, see the things that they've done in their life. And I want to thank each one of y'all for having a shared life.
You're welcome. Congratulations, all of them. Okay, so, the parents. Thank God.
Thank you, Mr. Ray.
Appreciate you.
Hello, thanks, everyone.
Motion to approve this resolution, number six. Number six.
I'm always in front of the camera.
It's where you are, ain't it?
Congratulations.
All those in favor, the motion, the motion, say aye. It's a pleasure to have a visitor with us tonight. I think we all remember, we're really sure we all remember the Christmas parade, the beautiful horses that led the parade through town. We're honored and glad to have Mr. Bart Long present with us tonight. So Bart, I'm gonna turn the floor over to you, and you can come forward.
How's everybody doing tonight? I know you guys got a lot going on, so I won't kid you for just a minute.
It's all right.
So, for those of you that don't know who I am or what we do, I'm Bart Long, and I'm in the real estate auction business. We're the largest real estate auction firm in both Virginia and Tennessee. So we have offices in Tennessee, multiple offices in Virginia, and proud to announce soon to have an office in Lebanon, Virginia. So, let me quick story about how that came about. So, Tony is a proud steward of your all's town. He courted me very well about building Christmas parade, took me out to lunch, showed me around, showed me parade route, we brought the horses over. We operated our business in roughly seventy different municipalities, so I'm familiar with them all. We have never been treated better than we were over here when we came over to do your all's parade. I mean, it was an experience like none other, to the point that I started driving over here. I've been working over here for years, but I started coming over here with nothing to do, eating at different restaurants, just listening, watching, and I enjoyed it so much that I decided I was gonna buy a building and we were gonna put a satellite office in, we bought a building over here at sixteen West Main Street, where Becky's has her hairdresser salon and the clothing store upstairs, there's an additional office space there to the left that at some point we get slowed down, we're gonna try to get that straightened out and used for us, but we just had such a good time, and I wanted to tell you all thank you for having us over, we were treated wonderfully. This is the first class operation you guys have over here. We've been, been a lot of places with those horses, I've enjoyed having them for many years and sharing with the different communities, but I'd be hard pressed to say we've ever had a better time than what we had over here. So, we had a special guest, something we've never done before, Doyle got right in between my two drivers and rode the seat right down Main Street with those horses, and we stopped and took a picture right in front of the courthouse, and since you were in the seat, we thought you ought to have one of those for your home. There you go. So when I was working on the building purchase, I was here in Town Hall, and I've been trying to think of something I could do to say thank you for how we were treated. And when I was out here in the lobby, I noticed to the right of the door, there was a hanger with no picture on it, and that's where this came from. If that is not a good place for this, I understand, but if it is, we'd like to give this to the town. It's a beautiful picture of the courthouse and the horses, we just had a wonderful time over here, and I just wanted to give you all something and say thank you. Kevin's the one that got me sold on the building.
Bart, good to see you.
Would you guys go by here in the lobby, please? Would you all mind if I waited until you were finished and take a picture with you after you, after I hold your hand?
If we're finished?
Yeah, after the meeting.
You better, you better do it. Let's go down here to the lobby, where do you want, do you want to do that?
Well, I just, I saw it.
If you look out there, if that's somewhere you want to put it, that's fine, I'll just, wherever it can go, it doesn't matter, let's just put it there in front of there. Three on three, at least three. Did you get some in here? Do you hear, are you all ready?
I think I'm in here almost three years. Actually, Dubai first, my nineteen years old, I remember, I remember, whole summer at the high school. So you put them four summers here, they all said about twenty-five.
Next time, there, man is, we think he's in transit.
He says, we'd call him.
Is Kevin in Florida or somewhere?
Sat out of town on Florida, didn't know, he got busy, didn't know if he was gonna make it back around.
We just rescheduled a time to meet with him.
By the way, I got ahold of Mr. Stillwell, he was gonna be here tonight, and he said he had to be in Kingsport six o'clock, and if you need his phone number, I got it for you.
And if he don't make it, well, Luke's not here, so we'll need, I want to schedule a time with him.
He asked me, he said, can I come any other day or anytime like that? I told him, I said, find out soon.
Yeah, yeah. Okay. Public request, Randy, Mr. Burke.
Not really request, just a couple things on my mind. I was in the dress last meeting that we had, I feel like at the end of the meeting last week, that they could walk over and slap y'all any harder than they did you and some of the council members for the way they ended the meeting. I mean, it was just, the talk wasn't done, and it was like, over, we're going, we're getting out of here. And yes, I had it out in the parking lot with them, quite a bit. I apologize for the language on me, but I don't apologize for anything else I said. I was highly upset. I went down and talked to Mr. Dody afterwards, and he said, I'm asking you, give me twenty-four hours to see what we can do with this thing, 'cause I know, I'm gonna go home and broadcast it. And he said, don't do that. And I said, I won't do it. And he called me the next morning, like he said he was gonna do. Then I find out that Mr. Leonard decides to go into the DMV down there, not Leonard King, Leonard.
Allows him later.
Pete Elijah Leonard goes into the DMV and says, boy, Randy Burke showed himself a part of the parking lot upstream and the dealers everything, so he opened the door. He opened the door for it to get out. I wish the baseball team would have stayed. You know, I'm getting old, I'm too passionate.
Okay, Randy.
I'm too passionate. I'm not getting up, I'm not mad, but it's just, I just feel like it needs to be stated.
Okay.
You can't help other people getting, election times come, election times come, that's all I can say to me.
Thank you, Randy. Mr. Boyd?
Hello, everybody. I hope you all have had a good Independence Day and weekend, and thank you very much for such beautiful fireball. Even me and my family and my husband, you know, he said we can go out if we have beautiful view from our back porch. It was short, it was beautiful, so thank you so much. And today I want to ask you, can you read it for me, please?
Do you want me to?
Can you read this, please? On topic from Mr. Taylor. Your reading is better than mine.
If I can read it, I'm gonna see what our town attorney advises me.
This is her request, you can read it out like you want to.
Thank you. Miss, Miss Boyd, Honorable Town Council, I am writing to ask you to adjust the boundary line of the town such that our property five point five acres is in the county instead of the town. The reason I'm requesting this is due to the fact that the town promised several services when land was added during the boundary adjustment in two thousand seven, and none of these promised services have been adequately provided. We've been denied access to water, and we do not have police patrol or trash pickup. Signing this is Boyd, today's date. Did you give that to Ms. Fane?
Mayor, I'd like to.
Give it to Drew.
Repeat that we do control that area very well.
Police patrols?
After, after?
Yes, we do. We, we.
How can I look at you?
What about the truck?
But you're only one who, who work with us. Thank you.
Say what now?
Trash comes to the end of the private drive.
End of the private drive? Down there at the bottom of the gravel?
Yeah, same with the mailboxes.
Oh, yes, okay. Well, Kevin, I don't know, that's a usually, that's a, that's a question, normally it comes the other way, doesn't it, Kevin?
Yeah, I mean, I guess it can go either way, the county and the town can agree to adjust their boundary lines if they wish to do so. If anybody wishes to do so, then you, you can.
Okay. Well, this is something, Miss Boyd, that we'll have to take up, of course, legal with our advice from council, and what's important is you need to know, and Drew, well, once we're done, either you or Will may ask Mr. Taylor to respond to your request, so you'll know, hopefully we'll have some other time tonight, but we need, we'll be in session with our attorney on two other matters, and we'll put this request.
But you probably need to be so, so for a newspaper, so.
Yeah, we'll have to decide what direction we're headed, certainly.
Yeah.
So, I'm doing this today, so you have time to.
Well, in the way that it works, the camp, the town has to wish to do, and the county has to wish to do, and then there has to be a petition filed with the court, there has to be a vote of care, and so, I mean, I guess if the town hasn't, doesn't have an interest in pursuit, that'll be the end of it.
I talked to county, they.
I said the town.
I, I talked to them, they, they willing to take us if you let us go.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, sure, town manager's report. Where's yours there, little brother?
Thanks, sir. Everything here now. First, on my management report for this week, is the paving and street markings, kind of combined those, the paving schedule, still have those quotes that are still good for WNL on different areas, it's in the information packet of the agenda, and also it adds to those, that, that toll comes to a hundred and seventy-seven thousand. And the budget for that within the state streets is two hundred and thirty thousand budget, so we're actually just gonna get some direction from council of different areas you might wanna look at, but also, we're gonna look at Pittston Road tomorrow, Travis Lambert's coming back into town late tomorrow, so we're gonna look at Pittston Road, we have our water leaks, Main Street, we have our water leaks, and I just got informed today from J.R. Watson, finally got ahold of him, and Cleveland Road was denied again for funding.
So is that, does that mean it turns us loose now, if we need to fix it?
If we want to fix it through State Street, we can do that, or we can apply again for fiscal year twenty-five.
Twenty-five?
Yeah, this, this was for fiscal year twenty-four.
Yes. I read my packet on Friday night, what roads is gonna be striped, what roads is gonna be fixed.
Those are just quotes, yeah, those are just getting ideas of what we strip, I did all of the areas that we planned on paving, got quotes for those, and also, we have a hundred and twenty thousand budgeted for strip, and you gotta, the way they do it, the way Rick does that, is he kinda gives me a thing of what you're gonna do, and add it up, but the curb, the sidewalks, that sort of thing, is a little bit more.
And you're telling me that Cleveland Road, they're not projecting to fix that intersection?
Just lost. Yeah, that, it is not great, high enough to.
Well, now, I'm gonna make a motion here that we fix that intersection, if we have to do without something else.
I think, yeah, that's why I think we got time.
You would not, we need to come there and stay with me a day to listen to people that fall in there that have to go across it.
Right. You're it too.
Needs to be fixed if nothing else gets fixed.
Right, and like I said, the whole reason we hadn't fixed it yet was so it would score low enough to get funded. If you fix that intersection, the whole road.
And who you talk to the VOD about that?
J.R. Watson, state, it's, uh, state good repairs, yeah.
So that, that's probably gonna, that, will that require milling, milling it down a lot? This intersection?
I think the entire area, if we're down to get the drainage back, yeah.
Yeah, okay, gotcha.
You crossed a few times today.
Oh, yeah, yeah. I've been there more, crossing there because they won't, don't wanna go over.
Particularly given the pavement, true. Well, that was another thing I talked to Trey, so I said, beginning back into town, check some more, we got room in the budget for that, they're digging some build plants down right now, and that's where they get all the asphalt for our area, so it's looking at probably mid-August before they'll be back up and they'll be able to get to us, which I was kinda expecting that anyways.
I assume, I assume the index, the VOD index in Cleveland Road is worse than the other roads that's on there?
In my opinion, I think we need to look at doing an entire Cleveland Road, the whole index was bad enough for it, it's not as bad even qualified to get funded, but I think Mark was even applying for it back when he was in town management, so it's been, and J.R. Watson kinda said, the last two times I fly, I'll see how it doesn't get funded.
But I, I'm curious, how, what does it take for that to get picked?
It really depends on who else applies and how bad the roads are. That takes so long per year.
I mean, why doesn't it?
That grant they put in there about twenty-five years ago, it's been located ever since they done it.
I'm just, what I meant was, I can't understand why they didn't approve it, that's, well, I'm kind of, okay.
But the estimates here for the street markings, those are in different areas, obviously big cedar, we're looking at fixing it where we have fixed the water line, Pittston Road is on there, Highlands Drive, we might repave it, and the water line is on there, Cleveland Road is on there in case, like I said, in case we wanna add it to the paving list, and then the larger section is Main Street from exit one to the fireball, is on the bottom there, that's the fifty-six thousand seven oh five with thermal and eighteen thousand nine thirty latex, that's halfway through town lengthwise, so if we wanted to break it up and do it in two years, that would be the halfway point, excluding, that's only halfway point on Main Street, that's excluding Pittston Road and that.
What's that, fifty-six thousand, is that?
That's striking from exit one, from the exit, to the fireball. That puts you halfway through town if you wanna do the other half next year.
Let's see, I think originally, y'all helped me here, I remember us having discussions regarding maybe what areas, Elijah's or the committee, did we talk about what areas, I know I, I asked for some of this myself, just curious on the costs, but I can't remember what we started.
And these, these costs are ballpark figures, I figured them out, they're ballpark estimate because you gotta account for stop bars in that section, I did account for the arrows, the direction arrows, you gotta look at stop bars, and I think we've got quite, quite a few curbs and sidewalks in there.
But we did have Pittston Road, when Pittston Road will be.
It's, yeah, it's on here, it's, it's on here.
We talked about Pittston Road a couple times, one reason, one reason is we got food city in the Powell intersection, there's a five lane through there with no traffic lights, you've got, you've got two on-ramps and two off-ramps, so we, we've talked about keeping that one painted, that way it's very visible, so I mean, that was on, that was on the projection, we, we don't make any decisions as far as what we're gonna paint or what we're gonna pave or anything like that, that's what Drew's explaining, is this is a list of things that we've talked about, nothing here set in stone, so it's, I mean, nothing's gonna change, but, you know, if we need to look at Cleveland Road, we can look at it as a group, make a. Nothing here set in stone, so it's, I don't think there's, I mean, nothing's going to change, but, you know, if we need to look at Cleveland Road, we can look at it as a group, make a decision on that needs to be fixed, and that's fine, we can move forward. I don't think there has to be a specific motion made or anything like that, but that's what he's got this list for.
Okay. So do you recommend being latex or thermal?
Um.
Drew?
Honestly, I've looked a little bit at it, I don't know a ton about the stuff. I know the thermal is thicker, says it lasts longer, but if you put it in a high-traffic area, I don't know if it's a huge difference or not with that and the latex.
Thermal has a, thermal has a higher build, plus it has some reflective properties that reflect.
Some plows take some longer.
For visibility.
Yes, that's true. And thermal will last longer.
It does last longer, the only issue is if you put thermal over top of old thermal.
It builds up.
It, it's just, it becomes a build, and then plows hit it and it just wears quicker.
Do they clear that out though, before they mark?
They clean.
What do they do, do they, I mean, there's, there is a lot of old thermal that's kind of flaking off, do they?
They go through, they go through and scrape it minimally.
That's why, okay.
They go through and remove it all, but the.
There's some loose stuff.
The loose stuff that comes up, they remove it, the stuff that stays down, they paint over it.
Yeah.
But now he has no machine to take it completely up.
And notice a lot of the curves, as you said, they're really.
Yeah.
They faded, we don't, it's, it's the.
I think all, I think all the curves are latex.
Okay, okay.
Yeah, he, he wouldn't turn the curves.
One suggestion I just made up and did some numbers on, on the thermal side was if we did exit one to the fire hall, that section of Main Street, half of Main Street this year. Cleveland Road, Highlands Drive, Pittston Road, and Big Cedar Road, the areas that were paving, comes to the total of 95,765 of the 120,000 budget for State Street.
You talking about markings?
Yes.
That gets over, hey, read them, do them one more time.
Main Street, exit one to the fire hall, which is half of Main Street this year. Cleveland Road, we decided to add that to the paving schedule.
Yes.
Highlands Road, Highlands Drive, Pittston Road, Big Cedar, it's 95,765.
And that's our, is, that's our reimbursed, that's our state maintenance money for it?
It is.
Uh, we can pay Cleveland Road for 90?
Just a stripe.
Just a stripe.
Just a stripe, alright.
And we budgeted state maintenance money, what'd you say, 120?
120.
How much did you budget for paving, Drew?
230.
230.
Right now, the four areas we have is up 177. Distance-wise, Big Cedar Creek is 3,200 feet, Cleveland Road is 3,000 feet. So if you look at Big Cedar, paving-wise on WNL, Big Cedar's quoted at 68,000, so I think Cleveland Road would be somewhere close to it.
That pretty well, we'd live to, what'd you say, 250?
230.
230, so we did, so you're saying you have a guess from the 68 to that 177?
Yes, sir.
Is that what you're saying?
Now, you're talking about striping from exit one this way, correct?
Yes.
We need to find out how long it's been since we've striped from exit two to exit three.
Correct.
And I think that, I think that's been the longest since we've restriped. I know for a fact we've done the downtown area.
I go back and check like arrows, stop bars, that's something, but as far as distance-wise, that's dead halfway, so it's going to be close, close to that. It's on, the tough part's when you get out there on the other end of town, and we got the turn lanes going the wrong way, so you're doubling your, doubling all the lines and getting your dashes.
I know we spent a lot of time on the downtown area to keep it fresh and clean, I just don't want to forget about all those businesses and, and homes on the other end.
East of town, yeah.
Correct.
Um, now, did you include the Pittston Road and the markings?
Yes.
And what you just went over with us?
Yes.
Alright.
And that is from the bottom, that's right there from where you turn in to Burger King to the red line.
You probably can't answer this, but I'll ask, because there's no guarantee. We've, we've had that pretty major water leak twice, coming north on exit nine thing, the second exit.
Mm-hmm.
Is that, have we prepared, I mean, do we know?
The line's not been replaced, we fixed the leaks as they happened, but.
Do we, do we have an idea why that occurred in a short period of time?
One of the times, one was just a blowout, how leaks happen, that's a low point in the area. The second time was kind of pressure turds when we were testing, being able to supply town view without AC tank before they put any of the.
When they cleaned the, oh, when they were making the water tank.
Yeah. So they're testing if we could fill, if we could supply subdivision up there, now we have pressure turned up too high, pop the line.
What about here, right here, at the post stop, was this section two here, I noticed we had two pretty good.
Three in the last five years.
Three blowouts. Are we, are we doing anything, are we, are we milling that, paving that section?
That's what we'll talk tracks about tomorrow too, that and the area of Pittston Road, both water leak sections.
What causes those again, I know that, I just, it's just.
Just pressure, pressure in a weak spot in line. You fix the line, you got the pressure, the system pressurized.
Yeah.
As soon as you fix one leak, the other, the next leak is going to just pop out.
Yeah.
Pressure is just going to go. Just going to check valves up there that comes off of the duty tank?
Do what?
To take, trace the valves off the duty tank.
The PRV at the bottom, yeah. Yeah, I mean, if it, if the PRV goes, it'll be just more than just that one, yeah.
That's one thing also to consider, Mayor, when you're talking about repaving from damage from water leaks, that's not billable to VDOT.
It's our, it's our.
That's our expense.
Okay.
The VDOT program is, is for maintenance, general maintenance, not, not repairing rubber. But Drew, since we're talking about asphalt, Church Street and Mill Street around the courthouse. If you don't care, talk to Mr. Lester with the county, see how long it would take us to get reimbursed for when we reasphalt that around the courthouse.
Russell and Mill?
Russell Mill, I'm sorry, yes.
Is that not part of their scope of work?
Yeah, it is.
It is, but we're going to do it, they're going to reimburse us, so I just want to make sure we're not waiting.
Like, what do you call to them, what if they're not ready by the time they're in the exit?
I told them, we're looking late August, or, we got a late August, that's what he wanted to know. But as far as when, when we'll get paid, he, he told me, just submit the bill, okay, that's what he told me.
Well, I mean, I just like to have re, some affirmation that when we submit the bill, it's paid.
Yeah, I understand that.
The other thing, Drew, on Highland Drive.
Yes.
Up top, where that was a construction area on the, on the broadband side.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, that is a priority, because the quicker we get that repaired, the quicker we can submit that to their insurance and get reimbursed. That's also not a VDOT charter line, so it's two, two projects, it's not chargeable to VDOT, but we need to reimburse one. And then we can look at Cleveland Road, just like Leonard requested.
So, um, so we haven't, we haven't applied to the, the company, we haven't sent them notes that they're responsible for paying, to have that fixed.
I want the, I want the notes, yeah.
They got it. Company notes?
Yeah.
Okay, that's what, make sure.
Yeah, we'd build, we'd build them partially for the repair.
Yeah.
We've done, yeah, for what we've done so far.
But that's what, I mean, we had.
Have they paid?
Send their insurance.
Okay.
Just being sent to their insurance.
Yeah, so we, so we built them for the repair to give the road back open and, and structural, but we need to actually fix it back to its previous state, so that's, makes a good balance.
Alright.
Can we not move to approve the pay, the paving schedule with the addition of Cleveland Road tonight, if they're playing on?
I think.
I mean, the public works to actually approve this schedule, correct? And the street committee head, you approve that, Elijah?
Yeah, I'm, I'm fine with the paving schedule, I just.
I mean, I, I would consider using latex to make it work the budget, a total budget of the paving and the markings, if that's what it takes to make it fit. The only reason I say that's we, we end up marking Main Street every other year, and latex is supposed to last five to seven years, I thought. Is that not right?
Or three to five.
I don't know, we're lost, man, I'm on two years.
Oh, latex, I want that latex.
I mean, I mean, thermal.
You're being thermal.
Yeah, okay. And we end up strapping it, it seems like every other year.
Correct, you could, you could strip the town from end to end with latex three times for what you could do with thermal.
Thermal's what, 12, $15 a foot?
Latex, no, thermal was 95 cents a foot and, the four inch lines, and latex is 25 cents a foot.
If, if, he indicated their schedule, let's just, I'm going to follow up on Mr. Bill.
Three weeks out.
So hypothetically, if we approve this schedule, it'll be sometime in August before he'll be in here.
The, WNL will be mid to late August before they can get in here, Rick is three weeks out right now.
So will he wait till we do all the paving before he does all the other markings, or will he do some markings?
He can get started on Main Street if we're not paid.
Okay, okay, that's what I was, he can do.
As long as we're not, as long as we're not on the market.
Yeah, okay.
Also, just be mindful, we can, we don't have to do all this here in the fall, we've also got the spring coming up. So there's two, two seasons for asphalt.
Yeah.
Typically, we've done some in the fall and some in the spring. We just, we had a light winter this past winter, just be mindful of that, but in case we have, yeah, but if we have a rough winter.
Yeah, and on that note, Will Rush from Marion emailed me, it's actually been a few months back, he hasn't heard anything yet, but I know about a year ago, we talked about VDOT, talking about us having to build our own salt dome, storing our own salt, so getting a. He wrote a letter to Richmond and got everybody else in on it to send supporting document for it, documentation for it, to, over, for VDOT to withdraw that request. He's supposed to let us know as soon as he hears something, but he hasn't, hasn't heard anything back from that yet. So that's another thing in 2024, I mean, start looking at it, you're not letting yours back.
Yeah, Mr. Gilmer?
Not only that, we're going to look for a location, a location to do that.
I don't think, I really don't think it's going to be, I think we'll be able to budget, but.
We, I mean, I, I think so too, possibly, but, but just, just as a inner pocket, we probably need to have a location in mind and have some money set down.
Oh, I agree. They'll be up to pay for it too, you, you got more money than we got, I'll tell you that.
I'll make the motion to approve the paving schedules presented with the addition of Cleveland Road.
Sir, second?
I'll second.
Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
I also, I also move to approve the marking schedule as presented. As far as the latex thermal, I would just ask the town manager to make sure that the total, the markings is within the total budget of the pavings and the markings. And latex versus thermal, whatever you, the committee head, street committee head, public works, great, or VDOT, get together, whatever's.
Work it out.
Yeah.
That motion?
Yeah, the motion is second, any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Alright.
Those things, huh?
Thank you, Drew. Sir. Third item off here is the GIS mapping. I have a nice presentation for you, my email crashed Thursday, so I'm working on getting a new server for it. All my emails from Thursday, Friday disappeared, my outgoing emails disappeared, and the land group had sent me temporary access to their area. It's our GIS program if they have access right now, so we actually have the program. I met with them again Thursday to look at the GIS mapping, see, try to get an idea of pricing and stuff, it surprised me how cheap it was off the back. It was basically, the GIS mapping is online mapping for our water and wastewater, is the main reason I was looking at it, but you can get as deep as you want to, until we can put our zoning on there, we can put all this stuff from our tax parcels on there for tax purposes. Super, super handy, and the perfect time is right now, we just had our PDRs done for our water and wastewater and mapping for distribution. So trying to start from, from fresh right now to get this going, the land group estimated about $100,000, we just came in, they haven't done any work to get it started. Right now, after the SSES and distribution and smoke testing and all the work they've done with town, we can get this up to one for $3,000.
You mean, things we've already done previously?
All the, because the land group has all the information, industry files already. So you're looking at about $3,000 upfront, probably three or four iPads, but you'd have to get to the field, and then you're looking somewhere between $3,500 to $4,000 annually, depending on how many users you want.
So it shows wind holes and everything?
Shows every handle in town, it's got pictures of them, videos, line size. This will be on the map, you can go click on Main Street, it will pop up the dates we fixed the leak, what material we fixed the leak with, how many leaks you've had in the past five years. So when we do get into the construction area of these PDRs on the wastewater side of the pump station, all of that can be seen as diagrams and drawings, instead of having to pay somebody engineer weeks to draw that stuff up.
To redo.
Show fire hydrants?
All fire hydrants, flow, the pressure, ex fire hydrants.
Shows that on the, on the.
Yeah, on, all the costs, the P, the PDR, you'll do all those flow tests. So I was looking, like I said, probably an upfront cost of around $3,000, $4,000, and then probably $35,000 to $4,000 a year, depending on users. And each user's got different capabilities, like we'll have capabilities to go in here and edit everything.
We can update things ourselves.
Yeah, we can update everything ourselves, but then you can have the cheaper user version, there's three tiers, you have like administrator, if they can do anything on it. But then you also have the field workers, where they just go through their work orders, they don't have to worry about going in and deleting anything or messing anything up when they, when they get out of the field, they just have access to, to view it and, and see what it is. But, so.
What's councils? That's something you were per, you were doing.
It is, I was just giving a little update about it, because it's been.
Sounds very interesting, man, that's a thing that is.
Like I said, I did have a nice little presentation that showed how fancy it was, but.
Can you forward that to us, Drew, when you get to?
Well, it's a, it's just access to the program, I was just going to go through and, and show it's not like a great.
I was going to show them why.
Yeah, but I can get some screenshots.
Sure. We're a little bit behind in this town, Mr. County.
We are, yes.
We need to pay.
We can actually take the county's GIS that they have for all Russell County.
How bad do you think it is?
The town needs it.
Bad.
Bad, yeah.
20 years ago.
Second. Make a motion in a second, any further discussion? All in favor, say aye. Wait a minute, y'all, I didn't hear anybody, y'all in favor, say aye.
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
I'd still like to see what we're buying.
Absolutely.
Who is it?
The, 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 the one thing that got me into wanting, more than anything, was Hank, is about the Hank and John Doxham are the two left that know where everybody line in the town. And when their time comes to retire, we're, we're kind of lost, so it's good to get it on there now. Fourth item I have is the 120 water. I had a presentation, and I had it in your packet folders for that, for our lead copper, to get into compliance with those pump and pump brakes on it just a little bit. And a couple of the things I was looking at yesterday and today. It may not be as good as what I thought it was, it may be them helping us a little bit remote, and us still doing all the work. So I'm going to, I'm going to look into it just a little bit further before, for, for someone to bring the water proposed.
When's the deadline for the, the first phase?
October of 2024.
Okay.
But it's, it seems like a lot of time, but it's a lot of work to, to get done.
Is that something, you, looking at this, is that something that we'll have bid out, RFP, or whatever?
There's actually a sole source letter.
Oh, they're the only one?
They're, they are, when they did the proposal, but that was another thing, is I've heard of a couple of other companies that may offer.
Chris, they've got him, they've got him, buddy, they might not understand, man, they're already. Land group?
Uh, no, they, they didn't have, they had some software now, like, you know, some softwares that did, but not just solely.
Okay.
There's those like suites available.
Alright.
Town pandemic for employees is scheduled for August 15th, Tuesday after our next council meeting. 6 p.m. stand.
I believe it.
Yes, it's.
August 15th.
Yes, ma'am. And the last thing I had here was a project update list. And, uh, last thing I had here was a, uh, project update list, uh, all the stuff we've been working on. James Osborne, uh, emailed me about five thirty. He had, that's our architect for the land for the, uh, theater pavilion. Uh, he said he tried his best to get those to me today, but he would have them to me first thing in the morning. Uh, it's very structural. He had some structural design, about the same thing that he sent that one time, but it wasn't any drawings for the actual pavilion that we're trying to get out, um, on it. The.
Wait a minute, whoa, whoa, whoa. All right, we, we're not in, we do not need to wait another month. Okay?
Right.
Not a little month to finish that project that we've got.
Well, I don't know that we've got cost estimates on the structure yet. I mean, as far as the, what we're still at, do we not still have to do an RFP? I mean, as far as the, I mean, once the foundation is there.
Just wait, can we do?
Not about the base, the base.
I'm gonna let them lead.
Yeah, no, the actual base, I don't think there's any. No, I don't think we have to wait another month, but we're doing that in-house.
Yeah, I don't think there's any action needed on it. It was just waiting for his plans to be able to move forward.
He's just designing the foundation to support a structure.
He's, he's adding the peers.
I understand that.
But there's nothing that.
Why did we start, why did we start working on the pavilion if that doesn't matter?
See, it's in the design.
That's what's kind of the problem.
Yeah. Soon as he gets them.
He's had over a month to do this.
That's, I thought it would last me when we, we'd get it together.
Yeah.
Did he say just have one or six with six?
Yeah, because, uh, those forms that are out there, they're gonna be destroyed.
Yeah, if, if they don't match up with, I think we might have planned for three peers and there might be four to.
So he's gonna send it to you first thing in the morning. Would you please, Paul, communicate to myself and the council members with your recommendation that he is moving forward, please? First thing in the morning, I don't know what he, I know what first thing in the morning means to me, but I don't know what it means to him.
We have, uh.
He's pulling on that or get it done.
Yeah.
Okay.
We have, uh, three quotes for the, uh, Veterans Park memorials, the tops of those where we talk about the cats breaking off of those. So Keith, uh, set up three, got some three companies to come in and look at. Uh, two of them were countertop companies with granite, and one of them was the cat block like we have on top of the walls, the rock walls out here.
In town?
In town, yes, sir. Uh, but granite, uh, both of them were a black pearl that matches the blocks that are in there. Uh, one of those from Absolute Granite in Johnson City was fourteen thousand, one hundred dollars. Uh, Atlas Granite out of Bristol was eight thousand, five hundred and forty dollars. And then the Horizon Stone Cat Blocks was eighty-five hundred dollars.
Can those cat blocks, like we use in town, can they match color wise with what's at the Veterans Park?
I'm sure.
It would look better.
I'm sure you could do it.
Yeah, the granite's cheaper, I think of it.
For forty dollars more, you're getting steel granite, uh, black.
The Veterans Park, that, we have got to take care of that.
I can tell you when they come about. It was the first day I'm on this council, I asked about that. We've got nothing done yet, and that's been almost seven months. I think it's time to get out, pop boys, and let's do it.
Did you say he's making the motion?
Huh? I'll make the motion if we get it done immediately.
To use that.
With granite, that safety company is eight thousand dollars.
Eight thousand, five hundred and forty.
Yeah.
The motion is second.
And for Atlas Granite, right.
Get it ordered in the morning, get them to bring it out there, let's get it done.
It's gotta be prepared for it then, correct?
Yes, yeah. They gotta remove the top cast, but that ain't gonna be no problem. The, uh.
And they're installing it, correct?
These were Keith's installs.
Keith's, okay, got you, got you.
What's his labor, fifteen hundred dollars.
Fifteen hundred.
All for property cooks. And also, uh, we have around seventy-five hundred dollars in the Veterans, uh, park, a camp from, from donations that we want to use. Split the cost or use some of that a bit, that's the guy's.
Okay. We have a motion to our city.
Use some of, don't use all of them.
It's definitely construction won't be installing it, correct?
And the demo.
Yes, sir. Got it.
And the demo. Anybody understand the motion? All in favor say aye?
Aye.
Oppose, say aye.
Uh, the, uh, manor water line, uh, the drawings have been completed and submitted to DHA. All, uh, materials have been stockpiled up, so as soon as DHA goes, go ahead, we can start it back on, on that water line. Uh, the ten score slots have been installed. Uh, last I knew, they needed to replace the breakers from two forty in one twenty. I think that's been done too, so I think those are complete. High control is at Technology Park, uh, soil conservation, we're working with the land group investigating the oil plants and also, uh, funding options with Russell County Soil Conservation. Uh, Stute Sewer Line is the sewer line from Stute Drive that has problems, a little flowing. It goes from a fifteen to an eight, uh, in that area. Uh, we're investigating funding options there. And last I talked to the land group, that's more than likely going to be our project required with, uh, Southwest Water, wastewater grant. Uh, shooting range, uh, the grade has been prepared and pad has been poured on it. Uh, the alley's been poured, lane's been poured. Only thing left on it is the, uh, shelter. The beams are in and there's braces around those hole, those in places that we get ready on.
Backing up, on the sewer project, uh, we need to go ahead and prepare an RFP for that, even though we're waiting on funding, uh, for that project, because my understanding is our guys can't do that in-house, correct?
Not the, the sewer.
That's the one that's going from fifteen inch to an eight inch and going out to people's yard.
Yeah, our house and lady watering line all day long, sewer.
I'd like to be able to.
Either in shore. No, you do not.
I'd like to be able to, be the out mayor as soon as we obtain the funding or figure out a funding source.
Can we go ahead and do an RFP then?
We can, we can go ahead and do it now, Drew, as soon as. Is that number one priority on water and sewer projects?
That's, uh, billable through the water wastewater fund it is. I still think number one priority is gonna be that pump station on seventy-one.
Okay.
Water wastewater will find, one day it might be a priority and then something busts or a pump goes down, a water plant there.
Those, those funds are awarded. When's the deadline for the applications for the Southwest funds?
The, in July, August, as usual deadline. We're still waiting, haven't even got applications yet because they'll wait for state budget for them to know how much money they have.
Oh, is that state dollars then?
Yeah.
They haven't approved the state budget, correct?
As soon as they approve it, then they'll come to them and know how much money they're getting to be able to pay to it. But the application is already in progress and we're sending a letter within ten.
Is the, uh, pump station, it's a contracted?
Yeah, that's big job.
Uh, Tony, I'd like to move to go ahead and prepare an RFP for both those projects and get those did it out.
What's in the motion?
Yes, sir.
Sir, second?
I'll say.
Any further discussion? All in favor say aye?
Aye.
Oppose?
Uh, that was the competition and Stute Drive.
Stute, yes.
The, um, playground turf is, which is here, we've got it stocked up. It's what we're going to begin on July fifth, estimate on that. Uh, we have Shane's plot for grant for fifteen thousand dollars. That goes, I think it's already public, but.
There's a good chance we may get it.
Good chance if I get it, uh, we'll go under contract with that July thirty-first, but they do not pay for reimbursement, so you can't start the work August first. We saw the grade work that week before, August first.
Preparation work.
The install company's already booked for August first.
How much was awarded towards that?
One thing, it's fifteen thousand. I think that's what he said it was.
It's in his report, I believe.
Yeah, we applied for thirty maybe, he got fifteen.
I think that's what it was. I actually applied for, I think, like, four different ones throughout.
I told you you hadn't heard from all of them, is that correct?
I haven't heard from all of them yet, but I think two of them are, they do reimbursement.
Okay.
So no matter what any of them has done, it's.
That is all I have. Unless anybody has any questions?
I've got some.
Okay.
I've asked two people in this room and they don't know the answer to this question. I was told to ask a certain man and I called and asked him. He said, I didn't do it. Why is the town's dumpster sitting right up there in the median office spot? From one from down here, pole. And they say that they do not charge them to use it.
They, we, actually, that's set up for our guys.
I know, and it's not on our property.
But, uh, it's, that was.
Well, they're saying that, I've also been told that the median office supply pays nothing for the dumpster.
They pay nothing for that dumpster in exchange for us to be able to use it.
Right, well, now we got a problem. You got other people in this town who wants their dumpster not to be paid for it. My suggestion, take that thing and take it back out there to the town hall or take it back down here where it is. Cause whoever made that deal, that deal ain't gonna float. I'm the chairman of the senate, and I'm exercising my right to tell you in the morning, I want that dumpster took out there. But, uh, before we do it, move anything anywhere else, somebody's gonna tell me who said that they could have it for free up there, that they wouldn't charge them for dumping it.
Okay.
I can look into that. Thanks, sir.
Well, that's good.
That's all I've got right now.
Anything else at this time? Thank you, Drew. Chief?
I'll just run through real quick on the numbers through June. We had a total of, uh, total summonses, written warnings and cases of, we had a whole number of seventy-six come in. Um, we had a total of forty-three criminal cases and, uh, we're able to solve them all except for seven, which has still seven acting. Thirty-eight total arrests, thirty-three misdemeanor, five felonies. So responded to six heavy motor vehicle crashes, one DUIR, responded to twenty-five city members' calls. Had a total of five hundred and twenty-five total calls for service with June and patrol of nine thousand, eight hundred and seventy-seven total hours to the town. Some of the things, of course, we had the Cedar Fest, they're, they're over pretty good. I think everybody enjoyed that. We had a good turnout for that. We did, I taught a class on, uh, UVA wise on some self-defense technique, techniques through the town and so, and, um, everything seemed to be good. I've changed and talked with some of the students down there about potential interest in working in law enforcement, hopefully we can get them interested in doing it this way. Other than that, everything's pretty much running pretty smooth. I will let you know that, um, just kind of, uh, in case you, um, hear from Mr. Fletcher, then he, he is off for another extended amount of time with some health issues. So he'll be without, so I'm gonna forget for about six weeks.
Is that the same injury?
Yes.
Same injury?
It is same, same incident, um, as before.
This is hard.
So he's, he's still struggling with that, so we're all just gonna, I guess, give him our prayers and stuff, but, uh, we'll miss him for six weeks for sure.
Chief, we've got, um, two requests, one from Miss Boyd and also in our packet, we have a, uh, a letter from James Stork regarding Donald Seymour, drive concern about, um, some of the vehicles out there in the twenty-five mile, about twenty-five mile per hour zone. Can we, in the short term, maybe document our, uh, patrol in that neighborhood? So that way, if there's any questions or we can show that we made that a priority to patrol that area, at least in the short term?
Absolutely, sir, absolutely. I, I'll make sure we do that. Um, and just to kind of address that, you know, we do, for, for a quite about how we had put, uh, that area on intensified patrol list, which officers were hitting that, they were required to hit, hit that each officer at least twice an hour. And the reason we kind of backed off on the intensified patrol in the late night hours up there was because of some complaints we had. Cause if you patrol that area, you have to turn in the, and somebody's driveway.
Right.
We had some complaints from neighbors that we were waiting their dogs up at night with their headlights turning the driveways and stuff. So we, we backed off on the intensified patrol in that area, uh, to where it wasn't required that they go twice an hour, but they're still required to patrol it, obviously. We just kind of slacked off a little bit. I did speak with Miss Boyd and, and we made an agreement that she said that, uh, we can actually turn in her driveway, so we can pick up some.
Well, I'd like to authorize you to turn into Elijah Leonard's driveway any, any hours of the night.
Oh, yeah, we, yeah, we did that. It's just once you get up.
After midnight.
I've, I've offered him the radar, I don't know.
Yeah, anyway, I just think we should address both those concerns.
Absolutely, we will, absolutely, yes, sir.
Chief, I've got one thing. Um, going back to community policing, I know we talked about that as a council and talked to you, but, uh, right here is a prime opportunity for, you know, your officers to go through there. When they go through to talk to, you know, a house or two or five at a time and just explain to them while they're in there.
Yes.
Uh, if they see anything or, or vehicles driving through their attic to try to, try to get a tag number and a make model.
Yes.
Uh, I think that would probably settle some of the peace in there and make people have a little bit of peace of mind.
Yes.
Because I've had, after this letter, I've had a couple of people reach out to me about a couple of incidents that's happened. And I just, I think that that would look good on the department.
Absolutely.
You know, whether it's, whether it's you or, or any of our officers to stop by and speak to the residents, it's a perfect opportunity to community police.
Absolutely.
Um, I think that would, that would ease some minds out there, plus I have a feeling you'll get some feedback on who the habitual offenders are.
Yes, sir, absolutely.
But I appreciate you. Um, also, if you don't mind, uh, can you get with Drew over the next, I don't know when you make your schedule, but school starts back mid-August. I don't want to wait till the August council meeting. Just get with the town manager, you all figure out what your plan is for the first week of school. That way we're not caught, you know, a little blind sided. We want to make sure that our intersections are covered, uh, that way everything.
Yes, sir.
The first week of school is just, everybody wants to take their children to school, especially, you know, the primary and, and the ones moving to the new, you know, from primary to the elementary. Uh, it seems like a trend of that long, that line is extensive for at least the first week until everything settles in.
Yeah, it's a little bit, yeah, we'll actually, we'll have a good plan in place and we'll.
I was thinking like till August, you've already made the schedule.
It'll be in school fifteen.
That's what I'm saying. I don't think we meet till.
We need, we're fourteen.
Yeah, hopefully, we'll have a good plan in place and, uh, hopefully we can, uh.
But we appreciate you guys, and I mean, honestly, Cedar Fest and July fourth. Uh, myself, I'm sure other council members have gotten compliments on our department. Uh, you guys look good, they're keeping their vehicles clean. They just, they do a professional job and just let her know we appreciate it.
Absolutely, thank you.
What kind of, what are you hearing about traffic, walking traffic through the town? Is that any, I mean, I'm, I'm not, are some of these folks homeless? How they get, how they get here?
We seem to have the last, little bit, we seem to have a influx of, of a lot more, um, unfamiliar people walking town. Um, we do try to contact them to have field interviews and at least get a name from them. And most of them are pretty compliant and most of them actually, uh, have a place they need to get to, which I made arrangements to get there. But we, we have a couple that I'm not sure how they got here, but they stay here. And, and we have a couple in particular that, uh, that refuse to talk to us. Uh, when we go to them, they're not actually going any legal, so we, we, we approach and talk to them and they give us the, the spiel of, uh, am I being detained? I don't answer your questions and, and not much we can do to help them.
Well, I think, Eric, what it is, that you, people see the news, okay, what goes on in the state around the country. And I've had, I mean, we have citizens along the main corridor.
Yeah.
Who sometimes are a little, I mean, we used, we're used to nominating, okay? We grew up, we knew who was walking and, or hanging out in groups, uh, down at the.
Calvert's Corner.
Down there and then down at the, uh, Omea Park, hanging out at all hours. And, you know, certainly we don't, you know, it's not that we don't, we want to welcome people to town.
Yes, sir.
However, we won't, uh, on the other side of that, our folks need to feel comfortable and safe.
Yes, sir, it's, uh, it's ongoing problem.
I'm sure it is. We, like I said, we try to conduct field interviews with all of the compiled database of who's in town and what they're doing.
Um, if they will talk to us, uh, we offer, um, when we do talk to, to certain individuals, if they have certain places that they're just trying to get to.
Get to.
The, the issue is we have several, um, treatment facilities in town.
Steel boards, those things.
Oh, that's right.
And they dug some up above where the old steel boards, they had some down below.
And we have the, the, um. And we have the, the Clearview, the Laurel, some places, so, so people are actually getting brought here and, and the middle health system is so on the rail right now, that we, we are actually taking, the middle health patients we have, we're taking to Northern Virginia and we're passing people to Northern Virginia, bringing theirs here.
That's what I was gonna ask, I understand some agencies will bring, if we do, if they tell us where they need to go, they'll make arrangements for transportation, sometimes unfortunately it works the other way, right?
Well, when they're brought and released, what happens?
Well, it's up to them to, that's the thing with this, that's what we, we already did with legislation, everything about, you know, there should be some type of a, of a.
Turntable.
Yeah, so, so, because once they're released, it's really, it's, it's, it's on them to just get back to where they're from, and, and all these people don't have the resources, they don't have any payment, so if we, if we talk to them, they say, hey, if I can get to the bus station, I can get home, I've been authorized, I gotta speak them right to get, to get them bus codes and stuff, but you know, it's just, it's a problem, we just try to keep.
It's up all the time.
Is it all hours of the night, I think, or is it just?
They're still walking quietly through town and, you know, at night I'll drop in, I'll see who's, you know, like I say, we try to talk to them and at least get their names to compile a database of who's here, but they don't know where to work.
I can speak up to midnight at six o'clock, or maybe at six o'clock, it's, and now midnight to six, I can't answer them, but your guys know, because I've heard them tell me about.
And it's, it's just, at least actually keep kind of calm down.
Constant, yeah, I understand that.
Is it the same people that stay here and then no one's?
There are, obviously, there's always influx of new people coming and stuff, for some reason, I don't know why, it seems like when somebody hitchhikes a ride from outside, they always stop at Walmart and then migrate into town, it just seems like that's what we always get and.
So they drop off Walmart walking, walking.
And, and you know, we had, not long ago, we had a hospital from up around, I'm forgetting how, up around the credit for a thing, had, had a lady from Dickinson County that needed to get back home, and that hospital literally picked lead them on the back because they said they saw we had some treatment facilities, called a cab, gets this lady's wheel, put her in the cab, paid the camera, I would bring her here, dropped off at a super rate motel, bought, paid for her, for a room for one night, and then, and then she was here. So you know, it's just, yeah.
She's trying to get back to Dickinson County?
No, she isn't, she's not working over there.
No, she's here.
She's gonna stay here.
Okay.
So, but yeah, we will keep trying, trying our best to.
I appreciate it.
Get a handle on the problem.
Thank you. Okay, anything else for chief? Thank you.
Thank you, guys, thank you, sir.
Mr. Taylor, do you have anything at this time?
Just an update, we had a hearing in Boyd case on the third, after the board heard preliminary motions and made rulings on several of those motions, and they set the case for a full hearing and we're set down with the DA.
Okay, right. Okay, we have some, we're gonna need to go into closed session for personnel matters and legal counsel. Are we still on acquisition, Drew?
Yes, sir.
So out of three, the motion for closed session, section two point two, dash three seven one, one A, personnel matters, acquisition or sale of property and legal counsel.
So moved.
Same.
Further discussion, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, say aye.